Good evening. Welcome to tonight's forum of school board candidates for the Jefferson City School District. The forum is being sponsored by the Jefferson City News Tribune and the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm Gary Castor, Managing Editor of the News Tribune, and I'll serve as moderator of tonight's forum. Prior to tonight, the candidates have been advised the rules of the forum. Tonight's forum will include a series of opening statements, general questions for all the candidates, a series of random individual questions, and a lightning round of pop-up style questions, and then closing statements. Fifteen minutes before tonight's forum, the candidates were given the questions I'll be asking for the first round of questioning. In this round, each candidate will be given two minutes to respond to each of the five questions. The order by which they respond will change with each question. For the second round of questions, none of the candidates receive the questions in advance. In this round, each candidate will be asked a random individual question and will be given two minutes to respond. Any and all remaining candidates who wish to rebut or answer the same question are given one minute to respond. We ask the audience to refrain from expressing your support or opposition to a candidate by applause or making noise during the forum, as well as refrain from using a flash if taking photographs. And now, let me introduce the candidates. Michael Kouti, Juvenile Court Administrator at the Pringer Family Center. Adrian Hendricks II, Regional Educator and 4-H Youth Development Specialist. Pam Murray, Retiree who currently serves on the Board of Directors for the Community Health Center of Central Missouri. Dan Renfro, Manager of the Trust and Investment Departments for Hawthorne Bank. Joy Sweeney, Incumbent Board Member and Executive Director of Council for Drug-Free The order of the opening and closing statements were determined before the forum by drawing lots. Each candidate will be given one minute for an opening statement. Adrian drew the first lot, so we'll start with Adrian.
All right. Good evening, Jefferson City. My name is Adrian Hendricks. I am a Regional Educator for Lincoln University. I've been in this community for 22 years. So I came here in 1993 as a young college student trying to pursue my future, and my wife and three children have been here in this community for that amount of time. My background is in education. I've been engaged in education for about 20 years, previously working around the state as the State Youth Coordinator for the Department of Transportation. I've been engaged in programs that work with at-risk students, targeting high-risk and at-risk students around the state. I've worked with over 650 high schools in the state of Missouri. We've done projects that have been targeted in St. Louis, Kansas City, Moverly, and of course, in mid-Missouri. A lot of what I've done has been hands-on as a change agent, as someone who's been involved in process improvement, and I appreciate your time tonight as we go forward in this forum.
Thank you, Adrian. Dan?
Yeah, my name is Dan Renfro. My wife Carrie and I have two children, one at 5th grade at Bel Air and one at 9th grade at Simonsen. As you said, I am, for the past nine years, I've served as the Head of the Trust Department for Hawthorne Bank. Some things I've done that'd be relevant to the job is I'm a past President of the Rape and Abuse Crisis Service. I'm currently serving on the boards of the Cole County Residential Services. I've been working with the schools from graduate of the district's vanguard program to PTO committees and Teacher of the Year selection committees, and I'm finishing my fourth year as President of the Jefferson City Public Schools Foundation. And I'd like to use my knowledge of the district, my experience on the board and the private sector to help increase the management of the district.
Thank you, Dan. Michael?
Good evening. My name is Michael Kouti. I have been in the district for a little over 37 years. My wife and I, Belinda, a retired principal here in the district, have two sons who went to school here. Both graduated in '09 and 2007. I have been working for the past seven years at the Pringer Center, which is our Cole County Juvenile Court, working with a number of at-risk students. With the school district, identifying those needs, trying to work hand-in-hand with the school district in order to make sure that we have the services available for those kids that are at risk. I truly believe that, over the years, I've been on a number of boards that have challenging issues, and I believe that I have the skills in order to bring to this board, in order to look at the challenges that are facing us at this time.
Thank you, Michael. Pam?
Hi. I live in Holt Summit, which is home to 15% of the student body that attends Jefferson City Public Schools. Back in the 80s and 90s, my four stepchildren attended Jefferson City Public Schools, and that was back in the day when this school was considered the premier district in mid-Missouri, and I would like to return the district to that stature. Currently, I have two grandchildren attending public school, one in elementary and one at Simonsen. I am running because of my time on the Long Range Facility Planning Committee where we were able to come up with a plan for facilities for the next 20 years that are greatly needed in this district. I am also running because I am tired of seeing every year that we have a lot of experienced teachers leaving the district while they are still in their prime for teaching. We need to regain trust for our school district through having greater transparency at the board, and we also need to bring sound fiscal practices to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Joy?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Joy Sweeney, and as already previously stated, I am the Executive Director of the Council for Drug-Free Youth, in which capacity I have tremendous involvement with all of our schools throughout the district as well as surrounding area schools. I have served on the school board for the past six years. I have enjoyed my time there and feel that with the change in leadership, with our new superintendent, a new principal at the high school, that it is imperative that a current board member with the perspective that I have continues in the capacity so that I can advise the new leadership of some of the pitfalls that we've succumbed to and ways to avoid them, as well as ways to engage and build relationships, communicate effectively with our community. I pledged six years ago to be the voice of the community for quality education. I would like to continue that pledge and help ensure that we move forward in a successful manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joy. Okay, we'll begin our first round of general questions. We'll begin with Adrian. Four JCPS elementary schools, Bel Air, East, Lawson, and Pioneer Trails, are currently listed as overcrowded. The maximum occupancy for the high school lunchroom is 435 students. When lunch shifts overlap, the occupancy loads exceed capacity for the room. Across the district, there is evidence of overcrowding in school buildings. How would you address overcrowding in the district?
What a wonderful question. You know, the idea of overcrowding in our schools, plural, should be frightening because that implies that there's a systemic issue that has not been resolved over time. The idea, then, that our school board should have already been planning and preparing and putting a process in place to not only meet the needs of the students that are coming in, but meet the needs of the students that are existing, that shows evidence that we have work to do. So when you look at what we're kind of talking about here, it is a systemic issue. We do have to come up with a plan. We do need to have better collaboration with the companies and corporations, our partners in education here in Jefferson City, to make sure that whatever the needs are, that there's adequate time and space to respond, and that that response is appropriate. Being that we are in crisis mode, being that now we're already behind, we have to make some very clear adjustments and start to invest in the kind of facilities and capacities that we'll need for not only today, but for tomorrow. So we need to begin that conversation and that dialogue. Eleviating the spatial gaps and recognizing where we have room in the current facilities will be the first start. Let's find out what we have. Let's be clear about what's being used. Let's maximize all of those rooms and make sure even if we have to rotate groups or rotate clusters, that we can do that in a way that does not disrupt education throughout the year. So these kinds of strategies, making the use of our facilities as tools and not just statues or just meeting places, use these facilities in the best way so we can do that. Then also, I'm sure that there are some things that we're overlooking. So as we are partnering with the community, as we are looking from other expertise, we need to find where we're missing the mark and missing the gap and fill those gaps as we can.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, obviously, the long-term solution is building new facilities, and I think that is a number of questions that we'll be having tonight about the building of the new facilities. In the meantime, it's how can we best take care of the students that we have now with the facilities that we have? And I think that's coming back to management, and I think what we're going to need to do is management's going to need to be proactive, not wait till we have people show up at a school board meeting. I think we're going to have to go and look at every building, basically the rooms in each building, and decide what is an acceptable amount of students for each room. And so we don't run into, when we have overcrowding, we're going to know at the beginning of the year, if there are a certain number of students coming in a certain room, we've got an issue, and we're going to need to be proactive and address that before the school year starts. We're going to need to work with the schools individually. I think besides coming and making that type of a plan, I think it'd be up to each building itself to see how best they want to do that. Some like to use the moving carts with the music and art, others do not want to do that. I think each building needs to have input on how they're going to control that at their level. And obviously, if they cannot, then they need to come up and should have a policy in place, how they come up to the board and see what we need to do, whether it would be putting in a trailer or whatever we need to do, but we need to make sure that all the kids that are being educated, all the kids that are going to lunch, are working in an acceptable amount of space. And I think that's something that we can do if we plan proactively for that and not have to go through mid-year changes.
Thank you. Michael?
I believe that the issues that we have today and that we'll be facing tomorrow is needing to rebuild the confidence back in the community. We've lost that confidence, and we've got to rebuild it. I truly believe with the new superintendent coming, we're on our start, we'll be starting to rebuild that confidence back into the community. But short of that, we do need more buildings, larger buildings, in order to accommodate our issues. But until that happens, I believe that we need to be working with our superintendent July of each year. We need to know what the capacity of our buildings are, what is the static capacity of the current kits. First, we need to know if 450 is the building, we've got 350 at this point. We know there are some buildings, we have a lot of transient students, they're in and they're out. But 80% of our population in our buildings, we should know the static capacity of the kits. There are some buildings that are not at full capacity, so we've got to take a look at that and see where they're at at that point. But it takes the work of the superintendent along with the building administrators coming together and bringing that information back to the board so that we're not caught in a crisis situation that we were this past year. We should know where we're at, what we need, and where we should be going by mid-July to the end of July. If it takes us to put a trailer at a school to accommodate overcrowdedness, we need to do that until we can build our confidence back in the community so we can pass a bond levy in order to build another elementary building. That's important that we do that. Also, there's an opportunity to take a look at our other buildings that may have space, just like you do when you're flying on a plane. You ask, will you take the next plane? We could also be asking our parents, would you be willing to go to this building and we'll provide that transportation, or you can provide it yourself? But providing an opportunity so they can have choice. But I think we need to make sure that we provide it, lay it out, so folks know exactly what we have and what is available for them.
Pam?
There are two components to this question. One is the long-term solution and the other is the short term. And I think in the long term, the answer is to implement the plan that was presented by the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee for the upcoming, for the next 20 years. To date, the school board has not adopted that plan. The only portion of the plan that has been formally accepted is the security component of the plan, which will be addressed this summer. In the short term, I think the answer is a combination of things that my fellow candidates have stated, such as allowing mobility within the district, bringing trailers up to the schools that need additional classrooms. You can't get, make space where there is no space. So as unattractive as trailers are on many levels, I think that's the only short-term solution when we need additional classrooms. We have to educate our children, and in addition to the schools that you mentioned in the question, there are additional schools in the district that are close to being overcrowded, that this is not just a simple solution of redistricting to solve the problem. We are at a crisis point, and the district gets attendance figures on a daily basis, so it should not take a long time to figure out that we need trailers at multiple schools.
Thank you. Joy?
Well, it is an interesting question. Across the district, yes, we have several buildings that are overcrowded. We have come up with solutions for many of the overcrowding issues. Some of them have been too late. But addressing overcrowding in the district has to be an overarching problem. We presented a solution several years ago, I believe it was two or three, in 2013. We presented a solution that would have solved our elementary overcrowding and would, by now, and would be, we would be well on our way to solving our high school overcrowding problem. That solution failed miserably with the voters, and I believe that in order for us to move forward, we are going to have to understand as a community that this need exists, it exists now, and we need to address it now. We need to work together to come up with solutions that the community will support financially. We cannot, as a board, say, this is a great idea, let's go ahead and do this, without community input, without community support, and without communities, the community helping us provide the solutions. So as a board, we have two ears, one mouth for a reason, I always tell the kids when I'm speaking to them, so that we listen to what's being communicated to us, we follow the guidelines that our community is giving us, the directives. If it's two high schools, if it's one high school, if you'll support that at the ballot box, we'll put it forward, we'll put the plan in place, and we will create the space that's needed for our students, and we create it as timely as we possibly can with the support of the entire community. And that's what we are going to need to move, make sure that we address overcrowding in our district, and it has to be done with everyone's input and with everyone's support.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to our second question. Dan, you'll take, you'll start this question. Do you support the findings of the Long Range Planning Committee to build a new elementary school on the east side of the district, renovate the existing high school, and build a second high school? If so, the current board wants to combine the new elementary school issue with the high school issue. Do you believe the issue should be combined in one bond issue or two, and why?
Well, first, like I said, the 20-year Long Range Planning Committee obviously did a fabulous job. It can surprise a lot of people. Great cross-section of our community. I think they spent almost a year working on that, and several of those people are on this panel tonight, and I thank them for the quality work they did. Certainly from answering the first question, I don't think there's any doubt, we have an overcrowding issue at the elementary level, which means we need a new elementary school. That's certainly true. We need another high school, we need a high school solution, we have overcrowding there. So I certainly support those two items. I don't think they should be combined into one in a bond issue. I know the last time the community was polled, I think they polled differently. I think the community was in support of a second high school. I don't think the polling numbers were quite in support of an elementary. I think we should divide the two. Obviously, it's up to the community what we do. They're the ones who are going to pay for it, they're the ones who are going to vote for it, and I think they should have the option to either vote for, either vote for just the high school issue or vote for just to approve the elementary issue. I don't think they should be combined.
Thank you. Michael?
I was part of that Long Range Planning Committee. We spent a little over a year looking at the various issues. At the same time, we looked at what went wrong back in 2013. There was never a clear vision and mission when it came to looking at an elementary building. We talked a lot about the high school, a brick and mortar, talking about academies. We did not give it enough support, enough information, in order to talk about the issues that we have in our elementary buildings. It's come to light after this past January, the issues that we have at our elementary buildings. There is a need, but we've got to get the confidence back into the community and laying out what that need is, how we're going to go about it, where we're going, where we need to go, where we're proposing to place a school, and how do we plan on taking care of the other schools that are still there? Yes, our long-range plan said, let's take a look at working in, at our high school, at our elementary. I truly believe that we do not need to combine the two issues. They're two distinct issues. I believe that we need to start first at the elementary level. We've got to build success. We've got to prove to the community, we will do what we say, we are listening to you, and we know that it is an issue. That's where we need to go, and we need to start building that confidence back, along with the board and the superintendent. We need to be out there and working with the community.
Thank you. Pam?
I agree that we should properly approach these separately, but in the same time, the discussion should be about both needs, because I think that it's not fair to go to the community one year and say, we need X number of dollars for an elementary school, and then two years later for the high school. I think the discussion needs to be, these are our needs, and they are all immediate, but the first stage of this will go to the elementary. And I think that probably the best idea is to go to the elementary, go with the elementary school first. First, because it's a cheaper, it's far cheaper to build a 400-student elementary school than it is to deal with the high school solutions. The other thing that needs to be done in between these issues is, like Michael said, to regain the trust of the community. And one of the ways that that can be done is by taking a big red pen to the school district budget and finding areas where money can be saved. For example, the district each year puts about $400,000 in the budget for outside consultants. At the same time, we also have a lot of deputy superintendents and assistant superintendents, and some of that work that goes out to consultants through no-bid contracts ought to be able to be done by our existing staff. And I think that there are other areas of the budget that can be addressed as well. And then when you demonstrate to the community that here are areas that we can save money, and by saving this money, we can ask you for less for these building projects, I think that will restore some confidence. So to wrap up, I would go with the elementary school first because we are in absolute crisis. We are two steps behind in crisis for the high school, so I would go with the high school proposals second. And again, through the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, cost estimates were developed for all the proposals that were brought up, so those need to be publicized further as well.
Thank you. Joy?
Okay. First of all, I support the findings of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. I value their time, their effort, their energy. That's why we commissioned the committee. As stated previously, we have a couple members from that committee, current board members that were sitting on that committee, and I feel that they put a tremendous amount of time, effort, and energy into coming up with solutions that will last our district for a long period, for 20, for the next 20 years. Obviously, we need to revise them or modify them as changes occur within the district. I believe that we definitely do need to build a new elementary school on the east side of town. That's why we purchased property over there. I also believe that we need a new high school. And I believe that if the community came up with that Long Range Facilities Plan, and this is what a collection of various sectors of our community believe in, and they're willing to help support us and go out and communicate on a grassroots campaign, that this is what we need, that we should support that. Now, whether or not we combine it with one bond and levy issue, or have separated out and have multiple bond and levy issues, again, the best solutions are going to come from the people who have to go and vote. So let's go out and find out what the community will support. If the community wants to just get it all done with, and let's put it all in one bond levy, let us know what the bottom line is going to be, then we'll do it that way. If the community wants us to separate it out and say, we only want to vote on this one issue, let's just put this one before the voters right now, then that's what we do. And again, if we listen to what they're asking for and provide that, that's our responsibility. We are elected, we are your representatives. That's our job, that's our purpose, is to represent you, the community, at the board office, and do what you're asking us to do. If we do that, we will represent you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Yes, sir. I do believe that the Long Range Planning Committee reports are accurate and that they provide us a viewpoint to begin to look. But that being said, I think our community has had several experiences where things have been lumped together and passed through, and we've made some decisions that we have, we've had to go back and relook and try to figure out, did we do the right thing? And what we have in front of us now is really a golden opportunity, and this opportunity affords us a space where we can look at where we want to go. How do we want to build this city, invest in this city for not just my children, but for my grandchildren? What kind of legacy we want to leave for the future? So that's going to take not only us taking into consideration what we need at the high school and what we need at the elementary school, but what really, what do we want to paint as a picture for the future that we're going to leave behind? So it's been a long time since Jefferson City residents felt like they were involved in something that felt like collaboration. We've been talked to, we've had people suggest things for us, but what we need here is collaboration. We need to have that kind of feeling that says, not only do I support it, but I want to see the next phase. I want to commit my money, my time, and my energy into something that's going to not only be worthwhile for today's problem, but have the momentum to push for tomorrow's provision. So that's been missing, and that kind of inclusiveness, that kind of relationship, that kind of atmosphere needs to be cultivated. So as we look at the elementary issue, as we look at the high school issue, we also need to look at where do we fit in this picture? How do we feel about how things have been developing and growing? And then take this opportunity to paint a picture of Jefferson City that reflects the future that we really want to see in place.
Thank you. Our third question, we'll start with Michael. The school district has looked at a variety of scenarios to address overcrowding at the existing high school. The approaches have included one large new high school that would accommodate all of the district's high school students, construction of two new high schools, as well as constructing a new high school and extensively remodeling the existing high school. Two high schools will be very expensive to construct. The voters have never been given a chance to approve a renovation of the existing facility and construction of a new high school. What is your position on the high school question, and would you be willing to ask voters about improving and expanding the high school? voters about improving and expanding the high school?
I'd like to start off, when we talk about the high school, we talk about and we look at certain portions of our population and not always all. And I think we've got to look at the total population. Not all of our kids are going to be going to college. We have other kids that are going to be going on to vocational, technical areas. We have not really taken a good, hard look, and we did not do a good job when it came to the long-range planning to look at our full tech activities that we have in our high schools. When it comes to looking at a high school and how do we do a renovation and what should be the position, I truly believe that our high schools need to be small communities. We do much better when we're in smaller segments. People learn, our teachers are closer to the students. We do better. When you're in a very large institution, you're just another number. You don't have that closeness, and it does not meet all of the needs at risk students because we're not providing the necessary services for them in a large setting. In a smaller setting, we can do that. What I believe, I believe that we need to renovate our existing high school, making sure that we have all of the essential services that we would have in building a second high school in this community. By having adequate and identical services in both buildings, it would serve our population much better. We had the same issue when it was time to build our middle schools, saying it was going to be a problem, the rivalries and whatever. We did an excellent job in building two middle schools. Not an issue. We can do the same with two high schools.
Thank you. Pam?
Again, I stand by the Long Range Facility Planning Committee plan for two high schools, which are renovating the current high school and building a new high school, and using our existing Atkins Stadium and Sports Complex as a district-wide facility. Back to your question about voter engagement, the district has polled select people in the district about every 18 months and asked them a number of questions about high schools. All that data has not been released, but from what has been released, it's been clear that people support two high schools. I would like to see more public engagement, and by that is two-way communication. And I think that the defeat of the 2013 bond issue, part of that was tying in curriculum with facilities. It was perceived by many voters that the mega-high school with a multiple-building campus was being built around a curriculum that had not been part of the discussion. So I think that's one of the pitfalls that needs to be avoided. It's always ideal to have one issue at a time in the discussion, and money has to be part of it. And to piggyback on about the Nichols, one of the problems that the Long Range Facility Planning Committee ran into when making the 20-year plan was that there was a lack of vision coming from leadership regarding curriculum for vocational and technical. From touring our Nichols Career Center, it's quite obvious that we don't have enough space to accommodate our existing students. And it's very unfortunate that we did not get to expand upon that and make a specific recommendation about that. But that is another area that needs to be addressed as part of the two-high school or one-high school discussion.
Thank you. Joy?
Okay. Well, my position on the high school question would be, would I be willing to ask voters about improving and expanding the existing high school? Of course, I'm willing to ask voters about that decision. I believe that we have. I believe that we've surveyed people. But I am not opposed to trying to ask voters more information. It costs money to run a ballot and to put a question on that ballot. I believe that some of the information that we've gotten already indicates that that's what we need. And I also support the time and effort and energy of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, as previously stated. We had that committee. We had all those people volunteer all their time for over a year. Why wouldn't we take their recommendation and move forward in expanding the existing high school and building a second high school? Having single facilities that are used by both schools, we can work together as a community to provide adequate facilities for all of our students that are equitable for all of our students. That's imperative for me. I mean, that was one of the big concerns for me in building two high schools. Renovating an old one and building a new one, how would we be able to ensure that they would be equitable? That both schools would provide the same educational opportunities for all of our community? That was a big concern when we were looking at that. And that's one of the reasons why I thought one big school, in addition to the fact that I graduated from a high school that was larger than our current high school. I had over 680 students in my class, and it was an excellent opportunity for us to provide a wide range of subject matter, academic opportunities, offerings for the students. However, this community is not the same as the community I graduated. There's no other schools around that are the same size as our high school right now. They can't compete in sports against schools of equal size. They can't have any competitions of schools of equal size. And our community wants a smaller school. Students learn better in a smaller environment, and that's why I support the two-school plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Yes, sir. To answer the question, I do, in fact, think that not only should we have looked at this position and been clear from the beginning, I think, again, that we can start now to take in and assess what this community needs. So what's your position on the high school question? Would I be willing to ask voters? Of course. But that suggests, then, to me, because we have so much confusion, that we miss some things. So now we have to assess, how well do we educate? How well do we inform our community? How well do we innovate them or have that space of innovative conversation? And that, to me, again, is a part of where we need to have some adjustments made as a community and as a school board facilitating community relations. So in my mind, when I think about what we need to do, it's our job. Our job as school board leaders is to be that voice and to be that facilitator. We are supposed to be about creating space for healthy dialogue. The idea of one school or two schools should be not only a continuing conversation, but a conversation that has the pros and cons provided to the community, where we can look at the issue clearly and make decisions about what we want. Why? Because we are a growing community. You see outside of this building, we have new highways being expanded. We have new bridges being built. We know that costs a lot of money. But we're willing to invest those millions, if not billions, of dollars to make sure that we have great flow of traffic, to make sure that we have access to our communities and the things that we need, because we are a growing community. And it's the same thing. Our schools are needing that kind of attention, because we are growing, and we are going to need to expand, and it's for a good reason. This community has always been a very giving community, if it has the belief that where I invest my money and invest my time is worthwhile. And this is, of course, a worthwhile issue.
Thank you. Dan?
Certainly, I respect the work the committee did on looking at the issue, and I think it's a great place to start. I think it's the school board's job to take the work that they've done and, I think, really present it to the community. I think the community, the school board, needs to lead the discussion as to the pros and cons of all the issues, of all the options. And we need to be polling the community to see what they think, what they're wanting to do, and what they're going to support. And so that feedback came from going out and talking to the community. I think that combined with talking to them, because this is a very caring community, but this community has to see the need. I think the last bond issue, we left out the fact that we actually need the buildings. And I think we've got to just talk about the need. We've got to talk about the different options. We've got to make it a community discussion. Whatever the community will support, whatever they think is the best direction for our community, is what I would support putting on the ballot.
Thank you. For our fourth question, Pam, you'll start that. Other school districts routinely redraw internal boundaries to adjust for population shifts and to maintain socio-economic balancing. The present school board and administration seems resistant to that approach. If elected, would you consider a policy of periodic gradual changes to boundary lines for elementary schools? Why or why not?
Yes, I would like to look at redistricting on a periodic basis. And part of that reason is that communities change over the years. Growth takes place in portions of the community that you may not have anticipated earlier, in different decades, different parts of town are the hot place to put in new residential development. So I would favor a policy where you have a specific time that you are going to look at this, and that doesn't preclude if things change in the meantime that you have to look at sooner. But, for example, you could have a policy where every five years, we are going to look at redistricting. And then at the five-year time, you look at what your numbers are, what is happening in all your schools. And if redistricting is not warranted, that's fine. Then you just go on and look at it again in another five years. And so I would very much be in favor of that policy change, as well as looking at some other policies. We are at a real crossroads. We have a new superintendent coming on July 1st. Come April 7th, we're going to have at least one, maybe two, new school board members. And this is a wonderful time to see if we can evaluate other policies as well, and maybe look at taking a fresh approach to some of the old problems that have been dealt with the same way over and over and yielded results that are not satisfactory.
Thank you. Joy?
Okay. Yes, I think that as population shifts, we do need to evaluate the pros and the cons of redistricting. As we can see right now, there are certain schools that are overcrowded. We also have some schools that have space. We should put the students in the schools where the space is and alleviate the overcrowding in the schools where there is overcrowding. Does that mean that every year we should look at this? No. I don't even know if five years, every five years is too frequent. I think that people have multiple children, often in the same elementary schools, and you don't want your children getting used to, oh, my child and my, you know, we moved into this district to go to a certain school, and then, oh, but next year they could be changing the district boundaries and moving us around again. That lack of stability is not healthy for our community either. We need to make sure that the decisions that we make aren't simply based on what's happening today or trends. We need to make sure that it's a long-term solution that will help our community have some stability. Yes, if there is a need for redistricting, I don't see any reason for the board not to look at that. And I think periodic review of what's going on in our district, making sure that the school buildings all have similar socio-economic and balancing as far as numbers and class sizes, is imperative, so that our students have the best learning environment, so that the academic excellence that Jefferson City Public School District is known for is able to continue in the future. If we don't look at all the different things that we have to look at to ensure the safety and security of our students on an ongoing basis, we can't ensure the success of all of our students. And that is imperative, and that is our responsibility as school board members, to make sure that we are continuously doing that. That's why we've developed a continuous improvement plan. That's why we're working with Baldridge. That's why we're working to do all of the things that we are working to do to continuously improve the educational and academic environment for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Yes, I do agree that we should have periodic oversight over the boundary lines. I don't think that we should make decisions about one or two families' personal, private property concerns over the larger view as to what's best for the school district as a whole. So we have to take into consideration what these families and what our school district is facing, and to be very mindful and conscientious about what is going to be a balanced community, where do our students have diversity in the classroom, and how do we make the most stimulating environment for students to learn? But that being said, that means that we have to consider a few other things. So, for example, people are not staying in their jobs for 10, 15, and 20 years anymore. Most people are changing jobs between three and five years. So that means that you can have a person in a community, and three years later, be out of a community, because we're changing our positions more frequently. So when I think about 10 years before we even look at whether or not we are assessing our boundary lines appropriately, I think that's too long. Looking at the problem should be a part of what we do every year. That does not mean that we make suggestions about changing boundary lines, but we should be informed about what the boundary lines are, what those implications suggest for our schools, how that pressure can be alleviated. So even as the city makes plans every year for changing and customizing where we're moving business, we're moving business in different communities that change the dynamics and the demographics of what's happening in that part of the city, we should have a very comprehensive way of doing the same kind of assessment, looking at where families are moving, where development is moving, where new construction is taking place. And that should inform us every year. So that, to me, we're not doing our job if we don't know that information and plan ahead of time to meet those needs before they become a crisis.
Thank you. Dan?
Certainly, redistricting is a very big issue to homeowners. A lot of them bought their homes specifically to be in a district, and so to ask them or to tell them they're changing is a really serious issue. So it's something I would take with a great deal of intention and respect for those homeowners. You would hope, though, that, obviously, as the district grows, or even if it isn't growing, if it shifts, you know, things are going to have to be made. Hopefully, when we would have to redistrict, it would be because we're growing and we're building a new facility, and we're going to have to redistrict around that. I wouldn't want to see us reshifting because, you know, of a year or two, we have some different numbers. But obviously, if we have a shift out of one, one area becomes more industrialized or more business, it doesn't have as many families, and the families are shifting over to other areas, obviously, we would have to take that into consideration. And with those types of situations where we see a population shift or in those types of things, in those particular districts, then I think we would need to look at having to redistrict.
Thank you. Michael?
I think that it is a need, but I want to go a little bit further. There's other areas and entities that we need to talk about when we talk about redistricting. I've been in this city for 37 years. When I came into Jeff City, I looked out west, Westview Heights. Homes out there were all individual homeowners. I come and look at it now, those homeowners are no longer there. They are now renters. If we look at the east side of town, and we go down where we had a lot of condos, and there were folks, when the nuclear plant was being built, and when it was, after it was built, we had a lot of folks with the Attorney General's Office in condos. You go back and look at it now, we have landlords that are, not homeowners, but landlords. We need to have a good conversation with the district and the city when it comes to planned development, how the population is shifting for residential areas, how we will do this on a planned basis. We talk about one entity versus another entity. I see, when you talk about redistricting, it's got to be a community-involved discussion, not just with the district, but also with the city, planning, with the code enforcement, with housing. We have today portable vouchers that come in and out, and as a result, as folks move out, our demographics does change. And as we do that, we've got to be cognizant of those issues and make sure that we are looking at it in totality, and how that plan arrangements are, and should we be looking at that on an ongoing basis? Yes, I do believe in redistricting, but it's got to be a community input and review.
Thank you. Our fifth question, we'll begin with Joy. Over the past nine years, the percentage of high school graduates who have scored at or above the national average on the ACT has steadily decreased from 47.3% in 2005 to 36.2% in 2013. When it comes to the state of Missouri's accountability measures for schools, the district scores remain in the high 70th percentile. What can be done to move Jefferson City's academic... What can be done to move Jefferson City's academic performance scores upward?
Well, this is an excellent question for me because as most people know, I am extremely passionate about education and very passionate about academic rigor. One of the things that I frequently discuss with people when I talk about our education system is it's imperative for us to demonstrate the academic excellence that we are capable of. We have some phenomenal teachers in this district that are capable of wonderful things. And my three children that have graduated from this district are proof positive of that. I believe that we are moving many things in the right direction. There's still some things, we go to the Center for Leadership Education. We send teachers there frequently. We need to ensure that professional development is focused on academic rigor and relevance and relationships. And one of the most imperative things to ensure the success of all of our students as far as academics and their academic endeavors is to ensure that the climate and the culture in all of our buildings is the best that it can possibly be. If the climate and the culture in the buildings is positive, then the students will model that behavior. They will learn, they will grow, they will find relevance in the learning, and they will be engaged in the process. They will be excited about learning, they will be enthusiastic about learning, and that's what makes them want to learn more. You try any child, take and give any child something that you're trying to force upon them and ask them to play with it or ask them to learn from it, and they'll push it away. If you give them something that engages them, something that interests them in a way that they can connect with the learning, they will learn, they will grow, and they will excel beyond your wildest imagination. I've seen it time and time again. I have four of the most unique individuals as my children. They're my test subjects for my life, and I've learned and grown from them and their experiences for the last 30-some-odd years. And thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Yes, how do we move test scores forward? There is a litany. There's a tremendous amount of things that we can do to improve test scores. This question is being asked around the country and universities and schools, and it is a continued and evolving issue. But to that, of course, not only getting the best teachers, but retaining the best teachers should be our basic protocol. We should have a desire to find and seek out teachers that are uniquely skilled to meet the kinds of student needs that we have in our community. Knowing your students' learning preferences would be a great start. So making sure that not only are our students and teachers are jiving together, but knowing that the teaching pedagogy, the way that our teachers are teaching, are meeting the needs of our students. So you have multiple intelligent frameworks, you have growth mindset. A lot of those things that I've been learning through my doctoral work has been that a lot of the need for increased performance has been teachers demonstrating not only concern and care, but providing them, the student, the most appropriate way to learn that information. So those types of things are necessary. After-school support and an after-school support system, not just to have one school with an after-school program, but a network within our community where students from different places may not be able to stay on this side of town, but they can go and receive services at any of these hubs around the community. Focusing on the lower 20th percentile of our struggling students will of course boost our overall district. So our at-risk and high-risk students are going to be the target area. Making sure that we have specialized teachers and specialized programs and that they are resourced so that those students are going to get the most appropriate and the best options available to help their learning. So when we think about our teaching pedagogy, when we think about our structure, one of the things that Joy said that is very important, it is climate. And this community has beautiful climate when we want it. We just need to adopt it and bring it over.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, I think as Joy said, she talked about the incredible education that her kids have received. I think most of our kids that are going through and planning to go to a four-year college get an excellent education from the high school. I think where we're missing the boat is we're not capturing the rest of them. I think the rest of them are not seeing what's in it for them. So many of our kids are going to go to junior college, are going to go to technical school, or they're going to go out into the workforce. We've got to reach these kids earlier and get what I call a value statement, where they understand the value of education. If they understand how going through the school and getting an education, not just a diploma, but how that is going to make them more successful and what they're going to do when they leave the high school. We've got to show them it isn't just about going to a four-year college. Whatever you're going to do next, you're going to do it much better with an education. We've got to reach these kids earlier because we can do a lot of different things. But until these kids buy in and these kids see that there is something in it for them at the end, we're going to have great difficulty reaching them. So I really think we've got to work hard at doing that, reaching them earlier. I know the district's been moving a lot more to these problem and project-based curriculums where students are working on projects and not out of lectures and textbooks. I think a lot of our struggling students have already got themselves convinced that they can't learn from a textbook, that they can't learn from a lecture. And so I think changing the way we teach these with those types of curriculum, I think will give them another opportunity for them to see that they can learn. And if we can show them the value in an education and how it will help their lives, that hopefully we can get more of them to buy in and we can watch our test scores go up. And more importantly, we're going to start graduating students who are going to be successful once they leave our district.
Thank you. Michael?
I think this is an area where we've got to take a look at our current personnel. We've got excellent teachers. How do we retain them? How do we encourage them to do the best that they can? But first, they've got to feel wanted. They've got to feel that they've been listened to. Until we can get that culture and climate back, we're going to have difficulty in them doing their job in teaching our kids. We have talented people within this district. They've got to be supported. I think that over the last several years, we've kind of lost that. We need to have a leader. And I've done some research with our new superintendent coming in. I believe he will be the one that can go out and communicate. He will go out and be meeting with our administrators, with our teachers, providing them with the support and the needs that everyone needs. With the lack of a leader, we kind of flounder within our district. And we've been that way for the last five to six years. And I truly believe we have a person coming on board. At the same time, we've got to have a school board that is also supporting and holding that individual accountable, setting those goals, looking at the strategies, looking at the objectives and how they will be achieving. That, and they will be reporting back to the board on how we are achieving those goals. That should be the expectation of a board, holding our superintendent along with the other personnel and bringing that information back, and we're staying on top of it on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Pam?
Well, the first thing I think we have to do is identify what isn't working so we can stop doing that and begin to focus on what works. It's no secret that there have been problems at the high school. They didn't start overnight. We have an interim principal at the moment. We have a new principal who's coming on board July 1st. We have had lawsuits coming out of staff who have felt pushed out. We have staff that needs to be supported. We need, we've had major changes in curriculum that have not been well articulated to our teaching staff. So in many ways, I think some of our teachers feel like they're floundering and they're not supported. And no wonder morale is bad. No wonder culture and climate isn't what it should be. So we need to be able to clearly, from leadership, from the very top leadership on down, be able to articulate what it is we're trying to do and then set about to doing it. And part of that is to engage students as well as staff and also to have a climate that encourages parental involvement. When a parent, a teacher, or a student leader comes to the school board, they need to feel that their input is acknowledged and valued. And I don't think that is entirely happening now. One of the things that we also need to do is to bring our faculty leadership, their representatives into the fold. They are key stakeholders in educating our students. And they have not been always well-received, much less made to feel like the important stakeholders they are. And I'm proud to say that I have been endorsed by the Jefferson City MNEA. And part of that reason is because I have a strong focus on trying to retain our experienced teachers and improve conditions for them.
Thank you. That will conclude our first round of questioning. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break. I'd ask you to be back in five minutes, and we'll resume our second round of questioning. Thank you. Okay, if we can get the candidates to come back to the table, we'll resume with our questioning. As they're going back to their tables, I will mention that the candidates were offered the opportunity to leave their campaign literature, if you'd wish it, on this rail to Mark's left here. So you're certainly welcome to avail yourself of that. So in this round, as we get started, these will be pop-up questions, a lightning round, if you will. The candidate, the first candidate, who will be Adrian, will, I'll use him as an example. He will get the question. If any of the other candidates wish to respond, they will have one minute to respond to whatever Adrian says or to add their thoughts. So Adrian will have two minutes for this response. And then if anyone else wishes to speak, they will have one minute. So let's get started. First question, Adrian. Votes at current school board meetings are usually unanimous, and open debates of issues and policies are rarely evident between board members at the meetings. After a decision, the school board president alone speaks for the board. Is this a school board model appropriate, or is more transparency needed?
Well, that's a very interesting question. Appropriateness is going to be in different views in the eye of the beholder. I do think that as a school board, that there should be some collaboration, there should be some synergy, there should be some protocol, and that we should, when we make decisions, when we make decisions, we should have a united front. I think that there's some strength in that. But I also think when you talk about transparency, when you talk about dialogue and debate, that that should take place. So healthy discussion, expanding and exposing both sides of the conversation so that all of those pros, all of those cons are on the table and where we can make the best choice. So what does not benefit us is if we have group think. So if we're suffering from group think or we're suffering from a common slate of thinking where we all think the same thing, it does not improve what we need as far as innovation and solving problems. So for where we are now, we need to have innovative thinking. We need to have diverse thinking. We need to have that space where you can look at an issue from every perspective and critically think about the issues and pull out those things that are going to be strong and those things that will make us weak. And then when we have dialogue, we share that. Now also, when it comes down to being transparent to the community, I don't see that there'd be any damage in sharing the dialogue. So sometimes it's a matter of not the decision that was made, but how do we get to that decision? And I feel that the community sometime is left blowing in the wind because they did not hear how we got to that decision. So sometimes, as we're educating, as we're sharing information, we can grow the community's understanding on an issue based on how we share the discussion. And then we can also get better feedback from the community when we are discussing those things and having their input into our broader discussion. So that's my answer.
Thank you. Michael?
When you talk about transparency, you're talking about one voice. I truly believe if we're wanting to be transparent, our meetings will be open. We will stream our meetings so you won't have to understand what that vote really means. You'll know what we were saying, what position that board member took. That's important that we open up. I know at times when you look at the agenda of the school board, it's not in very detailed order. I, as a, if I'm elected, I would want to see us have a detailed agenda so that as it's talked about, we will, if I'm at home, I will understand what we're talking about. But I will know what my person was thinking, what his or her response was, regardless of what that vote was, because I know how he or she would have voted because I'm watching them.
Thank you. Pam?
I feel that the constant seven-to-zero votes following little to no discussion is part of why there's been a loss of trust in our leadership at the school district. I think that when you have discussion, for example, I was on the Holt Summit City Council for seven years, and we had a lot of public discussion. And during that discussion, we had give and take on issues. And as a result, when we finally did vote on the issue, what we decided on was better than what was presented at the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, regarding transparency, I think the minutes need to be much more detailed. I have been on the website of our new superintendent up in Maryville, and I find that sitting in my home, looking at my computer, it is easier to track what's going on in Maryville with the different departments and the different schools than it is to track the conversation at our school board meetings when I'm sitting right in the room with them.
Thank you. Joy?
Well, being one of the seven board members, of course, I would like to share with you that there is not group think. We have plenty of discussion, and there are dissenting opinions. And that's how we come up with the decisions that we make. But we do, as Adrian mentioned, want to present a united front to the community and to our teachers and to our students and to our administrative team. It's important that we, as a school board, stand as a school board. Do we always agree on everything? No. Is there diversity? Well, I am the only woman on the school board currently, so there is some. And as far as transparency goes, if we sit there and have those arguments in front of everyone or have those discussions in front of everyone, does that make us more transparent? Or does that make it more of a conflict and does it show more division among our community? I don't know how that helps, other than making the meetings much more lengthy. I think that sometimes we need to have conversations, and they do involve personnel or litigation that can't be discussed in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
I just want to say, you know, obviously, in the best scenario, the discussions would happen out in the open. But we all know that those aren't always going to take place. But I think the key is that they do have a united front. And as Adrian said, you've got to explain your decision. I think that's what the board really needs to do. They need to do a much better job of looking at, explaining all the options they looked at and why, what the pros and cons were and what they used to make their decision. You know, when you just come up and vote yes and nobody knows if you, how well you looked at everything and what you looked at and what was part of the decision-making process, I think that's the biggest problem there, Pam.
Thank you. Dan, next question goes to you. Eight years ago, the average high school teacher had 18 years of experience. Now it's 14 years. The years of experience trend downward in other schools in the district as well. Why do you think that's happened and what would you do to reverse it?
Well, certainly, I think in what we're seeing and a number of people have talked about it up here is it's, in our district, it's morale. We've seen over the last few years that a lot of teachers choose to retire because they've got their years in and they want to get out, even though they could continue to teach for a number of additional years. We've got to make the teachers get to feel where they're part of the process, where they're part of the team. Right now, we've got a big disconnect between what's happening up at the district level and what's happening at the teacher's level. We're not implementing the different policies. The teachers do not feel like they have a voice back to say, what is it isn't working? They're told to make, not to express their opinions as to what isn't working. And when you're in that kind of environment, you feel very frustrated. And when you're very frustrated and you don't feel part of the team, as soon as you have an opportunity to, you're going to leave. So as long as we can change the morale, as we can make teachers feel like they're part of the team, that they're successful and making a difference in our students' lives, and they're happy, and they're happy, I think we can get, return that back around, and hopefully get the ten-year number back up in our district.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Michael?
I think it's important that, when our teachers leave, we need to be looking at their evaluations. We need to know, why are they leaving? I think that should be one of the key ports that the board would want to know. Why are they leaving? Why are they leaving early? But at the same time, I believe, back in the day, each building had representatives that would actually come, I believe it was called an administrative council, where they would bring building concerns from all over the district, sharing what's going on to the administration. That's not happening. We need to look at, how do we engage, identify what those issues are, from the teaching floor, on up to our administrators, and then having that dialogue go back down.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Adrian?
Absolutely. I do agree that morale and support are probably very instrumental in retaining a teacher. But I also think that there are some things that we need to be taking a look at. One, are those teachers leaving education, or are they just moving on? And if they are leaving education, that would be something that will definitely inform us on the exit interview, why they have left. But if they're moving on, that may inform us as to whether or not we have appropriate salaries, or compensation packages are comparable to other communities like ours. Are they leaving because we're not giving them what they really need, or do they feel shortchanged? So those are some of the things. Other thing, students have changed. The internet boom and technology has changed students. So what we may be seeing is just a transition between a techno-savvy culture of teachers, and the old-school culture of teachers, and that transition process. So we may just need to look at where we are historically, from the engagement of those senior teachers that were with us for three generations, and where we are now.
Okay. Thank you. Joy?
Yes. Well, I think that definitely, the climate and the culture in the buildings, as I've addressed, I think our new leadership is going to be tremendously instrumental in building relationships with our community, as well as within our district. And I think our new principal, we've got a new superintendent and a new principal coming, both of those are going to be instrumental in building those relationships. Ever since I got on the board, I've advocated for 360-degree evaluations. I think that is the best way for us to get input back into their evaluations. Not that if a bunch of teachers gang up on an administrator, then we're going to fire that administrator, but if that's the perception among the teachers, that they are charged with leading, then we need to know what it is, so we can help that leader improve. If we don't know, if the board doesn't know, if the board office doesn't know, or that the district administrators don't know what it is, that the perception in the building regarding that leader, how can we give them an improvement plan? Thank you.
Pam?
Culture and climate starts at the very top, with the school board. And unfortunately, in the past year, we've had incidents where school board members have engaged in very unfortunate dialogue with members of the public, in public meetings or after public meetings. That has kind of set the tone. We have teachers that feel they are not being backed by administrators. So it really is a top-down thing, and I think that while exit interviews can provide a lot of information, sometimes they don't. Because when a teacher leaves the district, sometimes they still need a positive evaluation in their future career. But I think what we really need to do is to demonstrate to our teachers that they are valued, and we do that by showing them how we treat each other, and by how we treat them.
Thank you. We're going to drill down on that question a little bit more. Some say the relationship between teachers and the administration and school board are strained. Do you believe this to be true? And if so, what would you do as a school board member to address this issue? We'll start with Michael.
As a school board member, I would be open to communication. As a school board member, I cannot solve those problems directly. That's why we have a superintendent. But if those issues cannot be resolved at the levels in which the teachers are bringing their discord to, then, yes, they need to come back to the source, and we then have a dialogue with the superintendent on how we can have a better situation. I think it's important that folks feel that they are listened, that whatever the issues are, they're being heard, and not being displaced and misput out there. I think that's the problem that we've been having over the last several years, that I send you through a lot of chains, in order to get that information up, and then I get a roadblock, and I come right back down, so I give up. So as a result, it's a defeatist attitude, so as a result, folks don't care, so why should I care? Why should I try to go forth? And I think we've got to remove that. And one of the things I've talked about, as running for school board, for this school board position, that your voice will be my voice. I believe that I need to hear what your issues are, so that I can bring those issues forth.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Pam?
I have pledged that, if elected, I will either visit for the first time, or revisit every building, to see if the resources are there that are needed, and to engage in some honest conversation. I think one of the issues that's come up twice in the past year, first with Moreau Heights in October, was you had people that had, they had a file of written communication, where they went up the ladder with administration and the school board, seeking minutes, seeking meetings to address their concerns. The same thing happened with a parent and teacher over at East in January, where they have correspondence, where they had been trying to get a meeting with the school board for many, many months, and they were, both instances, they were continually rebuffed and not met with. And I think one of the simplest things that you can do is, when someone expresses a concern, is to listen, and then to address it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Dan?
I certainly do believe this is true, and I believe this is, one of the reasons why I'm running, is I believe this is a management issue. You know, we're implementing things down on the teachers, they've got no, they've got no way to get that back up, as to what is and isn't working, so we have, and the district knows, we have real communication issues. And these teachers have to have a way, so to back up to the board. So the board knows how effective the policies are that are being implemented, or if they're not effective. And if we can't get that, then they are trapped without a voice back, and that's when we have these issues.
Thank you. Adrian?
So, yes, I do also agree that the relationships are strained, and again, that has the after-effect, or the fallout effect of the lack of trust and the lack of relationship. So my mother told me, sometimes it's easier for you to just apologize, and to build further, that you can get a lot further with honey than with lemon. So I think that we have to consider some of that, when there's an us-against-them mentality, or us-against-them climate being in place in our structure. So our campaign began with the slogan, "It starts with we." If we have to initiate that idea of being the first to say, hey, we broke it, let's fix it together, then we'll do that. If we have to be the first to say, can I start over with this conversation with you? Can we try that again? Then we'll do that. Why? Because the ultimate end result is that, if we don't fix the relationship, our children are going to be hurt, and our future is going to be affected. Our city is going to get the fallout of what we do poorly. So we have to make those decisions, even if that means swallowing our own pride.
Thank you. Joy?
Well, definitely, I'm cognizant that there is this strain, and that there's an attitude that the teachers don't feel like they have a voice. They do, however, communicate with me. And that has been made very apparent in the newspaper, and it's a matter of public record. And hence why I have been promoting the 360-degree evaluation, and hence why we hired a new superintendent that was a relationship builder, and effective at communicating and building relationships with everyone in the process, and leading the administrative team in that communication process. And that's why I have been so emphatic about restoring climate and culture in every single building.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Pam. Do you believe discipline of students is an issue in the school district, and how would you address it if you do?
Yes, it is very much an issue. It was the subject of those meetings, school board meetings in October and January, from Moreau Heights and East, but those are not the only schools with issues. I think we need to fundamentally change the way we're doing things. I think, first of all, our students need to always feel that, no matter what, that they have a second chance. That second chance is not without consequences. They need to know what they need to do to get back on track, and back into the good graces of their teachers and their fellow students and administration. At the same time, when a teacher asks for help from her building principal, or from someone else along the line, that help needs to be there. That support needs to be there. If a teacher is sending a student to the office, frequently that's so that the teacher can then commence, or recommence, teaching the rest of the class. And it really, at that point, takes someone else to deal with that child, so that everyone doesn't have their learning disruptive, disrupted. So our administration needs to back our teachers. Our school board needs to back our administration. The principals need to be there to make sure the building functions smoothly, and the teachers need to teach, and everyone else needs to be in a supportive role to that function.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Michael?
I think when you talk about discipline, it varies from an elementary setting to a high school setting. We look at the high school setting, you have zero tolerance, you have unintended consequences for zero-tolerance discipline. Where another kid may go up behind, and hit another kid behind the head, and that kid's going to defend himself, they both go down. That I cannot see. We've got to have a discipline that is flexible, and meeting the needs of kids when they're there. When you talk about the discipline issues within our elementary, I think it goes a little bit more beyond just the discipline, but do the teachers have the supports and tools in order to handle some of our challenged students? Without that, we do have disruption in the class, and kids do not feel safe. So we need, we need to make sure that we provide our teachers with the necessary supports and tools, in order for them to teach, and for our kids to feel safe.
Any others? Dan?
Yes, I think, one, I think some of our teachers are fully trained on handling discipline. I don't think they all are, so I think we can get our teachers some more training. I think we've got to have policies, procedures, so the teachers know what discipline they should be doing in the school, in the classroom, what needs to be sent in the principal, what, how we need to address different types, so I think that needs to be uniform across the district. And as teachers support, send kids into the office, you know, they need to be supported by the principals. And the district needs to support the principals, as they discipline the kids, because it is, we cannot teach in classrooms that do not have discipline.
Thank you. Joy?
Of course, we need to have discipline. It's the only way we can ensure that our buildings are safe learning environments for all students. And as my fellow colleagues have mentioned, it's imperative that the teachers are supported with the discipline measures that they are, that the policies that they are guided by. They need the support of the building administrators, they need the support of the board office, and the school board, in those disciplinary actions. One of the things that was mentioned earlier about the success of my children, my oldest son graduated from high school, and went directly into the military, because he recognized that he graduated from high school, and did not have the discipline that he needed to be successful in college, and go on by himself. So he went into the Air Force to obtain that discipline. Our schools, our teachers need the support that they, to provide that discipline, and our students are seeking that discipline, and they need it to be successful in society. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Yes, I also agree with my colleagues, and a lot of what they've said. So empowering teachers should be the basis, not just because of discipline, because teachers should be empowered and supported. So that should be a part of the day-to-day idea of school. So not only having strong discipline and policy for their backing, but we should provide mental health awareness and training for our teachers and staff, because we have a lot of these issues that blend in. Not only that, but we also have parents who need parenting support and parenting skills. So not only do you see discipline and behavioral issues in the classroom, they are because there are discipline and behavioral issues out in the home. And being a two-tier approach, and not just a one-size approach. So having that kind of behavioral program that's in place to teach our students how to manage anger, how to express themselves appropriately, can be a conduit that we can have for engaging a better system of classroom management. Lastly, even when they have ISS, in-school suspension, we can use that as a platform for distance learning, and keep them engaged in the learning process, while we're dealing with discipline issues.
Thank you. Our next question will go to Joy. Are you supportive of the district's decision to form seven career-oriented academies at the high school? Or do you think the board should take a step back and review the decision?
The seven-career academies is a curriculum decision. It is not a decision that the board made. It's a decision that the administration made. And the decision was made after significant research and thought was put into it. I think that it needs to, we need to ensure that the relationship and the understanding of how this, the academies will engage students, is important for our teachers to understand. In order for this, the seven-career academies, or whatever model of curricula or instruction that you want to provide, the teachers have to be engaged and empowered to understand that model. We cannot just ram things down the throats of our instructors, and expect them to come forward and be able to instruct in that manner. So the seven-career academies, in theory, is a good idea, because it provides relevance to the learners. As I was mentioning before, it gives them an opportunity to learn in a way that they understand and they engage in. But in order to implement it correctly, and appropriately, we have to make sure that our teachers feel empowered in the process, they feel empowered in the system, and they're engaged in the development of that curriculum. And if we don't ensure that they have a voice, again, just like in everything else, if we don't ensure that they have a voice, and that they have input into that policy, then, or into that curricular development, then we cannot make sure, then we can't force it on them and say, just go ahead and teach this, this is what you've got to teach. We've got to make sure that they are part of the process in developing that curriculum, otherwise, it's not going to be successful, because they're the ones that are in the classroom with the students on a daily basis, charged with educating those students. And if they don't know, or they're not completely empowered by the process, then they won't be able to engage it effectively.
Okay, I'm going to redirect the question to you, and I will say, I'm going to ask anyone else who responds the same direct question. Do you, as a board member, believe the school district should continue with an academy approach, or a different approach?
Do I, as a board member, believe that the school district should continue with academy approach?
Yes, that's a question.
I believe that it engages youth in learning, yes.
Okay. Would anyone else like to respond? Pam?
First, let me answer your second question first. I do think it's time to reevaluate. I'm not sold on academies for 100% of our students. There are other ways that you can engage students without academies, using some of the very same curriculum. I would disagree that the rolling out of the academies was well-thought-out. For example, academies were implemented this year at Simonsen, yet it is not until next year that we will have anyone in a position of leadership that has had successful experience with academies. From my understanding, from teachers at the From my understanding, from teachers at the high school, the administration has been unsuccessful in articulating to them how academies are going to be implemented at the high school. So yes, absolutely, it's time to reevaluate the whole process. Thank you.
And to my point, do you support the continuation of the approach of academies or a different approach?
I would prefer a different approach, because I don't think that academies, as implemented for 100% of the students, is the best way to go.
Thank you. Michael?
When the academies, when the academy model came out, it was back in 2013 with the mega high school with the seven pods voted down. Then, a year, year and a half later, it's now being implemented. My question comes down to, what are we giving up in order to implement this particular model? I know that this coming summer, we're talking about taking down some walls in order to accommodate this academy model. I was against the model, not the processes that that model can hold for some students, but I do not see it meeting the needs of all students at this point. The question was, do I support the model? I do not support the model the way it was implemented, but I do support the concept of the educational philosophies that it does bring.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to respond?
Do I support academies? Yes, I do support academies. I support academies based on the research, and the research suggests that an academy structure has a decrease in in-school discipline issues, an increase in graduation rates, an increase in proficiency in science and reading and mathematics. So the research suggests that the academies are a good structure and strategy. How it was implemented, so on and so forth, I can attest to that, because I wasn't involved in that. But I do grieve this scenario very deeply, because having this kind of mixed message in leadership, in my opinion, is just very dangerous. We've asked, we've asked our teachers, in essence, to change their curriculum, change their structure, and implement this with the belief that this has been an endorsed strategy that we would implement for our students, and now it seems we're backpedaling. I do think we should go back and reevaluate. I do think that we need to make sure that all participants are on board. But I think that it is, we've just created a very dangerous space, and I think that we should have, we should have done a better job early preventing this kind of situation.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, the first thing is, this is a political event, and I object to you asking a direct question and wanting a direct answer from a political candidate. I don't think that's appropriate. As far as academies go, I, my, I have a son who's in Simonsen, and he, and he, we've had a good year with the academies. I understand they have not been implemented as well. They're still scrambling to implement them at the high school, that, you know, we need to do a better job of that. I'm excited that we do have a new principal that comes in that has experience in the academy model. So I would hate for us to jump to academies, spend all the time with the teachers, and then jump right back out. Since we're already in, I support academies for next year, and I, and I, and I'm interested to see with some new experiences and someone who has experience, how, how they truly can work and implement, and I'd certainly want to give them at least another year to do that.
Thank you. Adrian, next question comes to you. Teachers and students have both voiced concerns about the change to a 10-block schedule at the high school. Both groups cite substantial decreases in instruction time, a marked increase in preparation time for more classes, and a lack of input when the scheduling options were being debated. Should the board have taken more time to investigate the administrators' decision to move forward with the plan? Or should class scheduling remain the responsibility of building-level leaders?
Should class scheduling be the responsibility of building-level leaders? It is their responsibility, but their responsibility is to build a, an education platform that can be sustained and supported. So if that's the case, if there is this resistance to the 10-block from the students and the staff who have to implement it, and it seems like they didn't do a good job with making sure that the, the circumstances were going to be conducive to a successful implementation. So I do think that it is their responsibility, and that there should have been a conversation in place that was clear about how the staff felt about 10-block, how the students felt about 10-block. I asked my daughter and her friends what they thought about it, because I wanted to hear from the ground. What do you think about this and how this is impacting you? And their opinions were very different from what I've been hearing. So those gaps and those chasms, as unnecessary as they are, we seem to keep finding ourselves dealing with them after the fact. And hopefully, as we deal with the new superintendent, we'll be able to deal with some of these things in, in front and have a smooth transition, instead of always having a crisis and backing, and backing up. So that's where I think we are now.
Thank you. Dan?
I think this goes back to, I think, the board question is, you know, we've, we heard about it, we've heard some of the concerns, but I think, once again, we never, I never really saw anything as to what were the different choices and really talked about the pros and cons of that. Again, they made a decision, and it may be the best decision, but I would have liked to have seen a lot more detail as to what went into the thought process, what were the pros and cons of it, how it was going to affect, addressing the concerns that the students had, addressing the concerns that some of the teachers had. And so I would have just liked to have seen more detail on that before, knowing really what, what we needed to do. I don't think they provided the community with enough information.
Thank you. Anyone else? Joy?
Basically, the board at our meeting didn't vote at all on the 10-block schedule. What we voted on was to have a diploma that was a college preparatory diploma. So we voted on that diploma and a standard diploma. We didn't vote on the 10-block schedule. The teachers and administration presented, secondary administrator presented about that, that they had adopted, that the teachers voted on that. However, as Dan said, the vote wasn't, we were not presented with what the building-level leaders presented to the teachers to vote on. So, and we did not make that decision. That decision was left up to the building-level leaders, and that is where we cannot make every single decision. We need to leave those decisions up to the building-level leaders. If those decisions are to be held accountable, to, if those building-level leaders are to be held accountable for those decisions, they need to engage the people in the buildings in that process, and yes, so that they all have the buy-in. The vote should have been something that everybody, some of the choices on the ballot should have been something that everybody was in agreement with.
Thank you. Pam?
I was at the school board meeting where the 10-block schedule was discussed, and at that meeting, during public comment, you had the teachers' representatives stand up and talk about the impact on teachers, who now go from teaching six of eight classes in the block to eight of 10, with seven of those eight being unique classes. We also, at that meeting, had the senior class president stand up and present a petition of almost 2,000 signatures, objecting to the 10-block schedule, because for each class they're going to lose 18 hours of instruction time. Yet, the school board did not engage that teacher, who was a representative of all the teachers, did not engage him in any discussion, did not engage the student leader in any discussion, and instead went ahead with the policy that set up the possibility of the 10-block schedule. So I'm extremely disappointed with the way everything came about, and the lack of input, and the lack of taking responsibility for that decision.
Thank you. All right, our last question, and this will go to Dan. What's the role of the superintendent versus the school board when it comes to day-to-day decisions and long-range plans? In essence, I'll use the city as an example. You have a mayor, you have a city administrator. Who's the boss? Who, where, where do you draw the lines between where your job as a school board member begins and where the superintendent's begins?
Well, ultimately, the responsibility for everything in the district belongs with the school board. They're ultimately responsible for everything and carrying it out. But what the school board's job is to do is to basically give the overview, the 30,000-foot view, where, what helps set policies and procedures, helps set long-range planning goals, where they want the district to go, what we need to be working on. And then it's the superintendent's job to go out and work with the faculty, the staff, the teachers, to go ahead and put the details on the plan and go out and implement that. So I think, you know, as a board member, our job is to stand up and look at the high, big picture, and where, and leave that with the description for the superintendent. But I think it's also our job to hear feedback from the teachers, to make sure that what we're wanting done is actually getting implemented. So when it's not, we know when it needs to be corrected, because that's what our, without that, we can't fully evaluate whether or not the superintendent is doing a good job.
Thank you. Michael?
I believe the role of the school board versus the superintendent is, the school board hires and fires that superintendent. That school board sets the goals and parameters on what they're wanting that superintendent to implement. He, with his administrative staff, will then go out and implement the goals, strategies, and report back to the board on what, on how it's been accomplished, how it's being successfully implemented, what barriers are out there, what is it, if it's a financial barrier, is there something that needs to be looked at from a financial standpoint? But ultimately, that superintendent reports back to the board on how well those goals and objectives have been implemented, and how far they need to go, and what accomplishments they've made.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to respond? Pam?
I agree with everyone that the job of the superintendent is to carry out the day-to-day, and the long-range planning, and the policies, and those directives are the responsibility of the board. But the board also has the responsibility for oversight and accountability for everything and everyone. And I think that sometimes, sitting as a member of the public, it's sometimes it seems like it's upside down. Sometimes it seems like, I feel like, some of the school board members are working for the superintendent instead of the other way around. And I think that we need to, a school board that is clearer on direction and leadership, and of course, the accountability.
Thank you. Joy?
Well, yes, the job of the school board is to hire and fire the superintendent, as well as to set policy. And ultimately, we are accountable for everything that does happen in the district. We are this board, and it is our responsibility to be accountable, to hold that superintendent accountable for everything that we establish that they are to be responsible for. We, our, our job is to establish the long-range plan, to develop a strategic plan, to work with that superintendent, to develop that plan collectively, and we do need to, to hold ourselves responsible, responsible as well as that superintendent. We have to hold him accountable to do what we are charging him to do. And we do, you know, at times, we may need to trust but verify what he's telling us is happening. And that may mean talking to the constituents out in the community, talking to building-level leaders, talking to teachers, talking to staff, talking to members of our community to verify that what we are charging our superintendent to do is getting done at every level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I do agree with a lot of what has been said so far. My thought about the superintendent and the school board relationship is, is almost like NASA and, and being in Houston and the astronaut on the moon. So the superintendent is going to be on the ground. He's going to be the, the person who's navigating the terrain, and we're going to be the collective wisdom behind him or her, making sure that they have all of what they need to implement the vision of the, of the district. But that also suggests that the school board should be, and should carry a certain level of expertise. That's why, again, I believe that you should have educators on the school board that are familiar with the topics, that are familiar with the research, that are familiar with the data, that have looked at this type of information and know what the advancing education platform looks like, not only in Jefferson City and in Missouri, but across the country. And as we move toward global communities, what does that mean around the world? So, so those things are being mediated in that relationship between us as a board and the superintendent himself or herself.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of our questioning. At this point, we'll now have closing statements from the candidates. They'll have three minutes each to offer their closing statements, and we'll start again with Adrian.
All right, thank you so much. We truly appreciate you all spending time with us this afternoon and this forum. As you can see, education is very important, not only for the future of Jefferson City, but it's important for all of our, our lives and what, what is a byproduct of that. I came into this conversation from a very different perspective than my other candidates. As a young person, growing up in a dysfunctional school district, I experienced what it was to be a student that was unprepared in a dysfunctional school system and, and the impact of that. So as a college student, under-prepared, with a 1.8, strong 1.8 GPA, I realized that something was wrong. And as I had to struggle with that, I had to struggle with whether I felt smart, or if I could be a smart person, because I felt dumb all the time. And I, I, I come to the table with that in mind. I also come to the table with a perspective, because I've worked with parents, I've worked with them for the last 15 years, where their students and their, their sons at the table, struggling with math and reading, struggling, and the parents not really knowing how to be better advocates for them, how to support them. So as I've climbed that ladder, as I finished my second and almost third master's degree and gone into my doctoral work, I come to the table as an educator, board member or not, as an educator, as a parent, as a father, as a, as a program developer, from every type of program, from STEAM and STEM, childhood obesity reduction, academic enrichment, high-risk student engagement. I've done those things, and I bring that to strengthen what we have. We have good opportunity in front of us, and we also have people who are very committed, all of them, very smart, all of them. And we, we want to do the best, but I do believe that that brings the question, who can bring the best perspectives? And I believe that I can contribute to that in a meaningful way, and if I'm given the opportunity, I will do so to the best of my ability. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Dan?
Well, again, I want to thank you, everyone. Thank you for having us and hosting us. Again, it's always amazing to me how many people come out that really care about our schools. Thank you all for taking time out of your evening to come and listen to us. Obviously, coming on the school board is a big commitment, and, and of course, I, I think I do that like other people do it, because I really care about this district. But this district does mean a lot to me. Grant, my grandparents, parents, my sister and I all graduated from the district, my mother taught in the district, my sister currently teaches in the district, I have kids in the district. So I really care about the district. And, and one of my main points, I think I've talked about it here, is, is management. And, and I want to see us improve the management processes. I think I heard Adrian talking about his NASA example, and all I can hear is a teacher saying, Houston, we have a problem. And, and I want the astronauts to know that I hear them. I, I don't think, I talked about, there's a gap between what's happening in the schools and the school board. We're not getting, people are not, we're not getting policies implemented. We're not holding people accountable for implementing them. People who are implementing do not have the authority to make decisions, so we're, we're needing decisions made, and they're not being made. We've got to make sure our goals are stated clearly. We've got to make sure that we clean up the management process of this, so we can improve the morale. We've got to stop being reactive and being proactive, and make sure that we're out in front of our issues, instead of trying to clean up messes behind them. And I've also talked about, you know, our job as a district is to make sure we educate all our students. We have, you know, the ones going off to four-year college are doing great, but we have got to get, make sure we reach the rest of them. Every kid that comes out of our school ill-prepared for their next step in life is a huge cost to our community. We can't afford that. We've got, we, we can't expect them to change, to adapt to us. We are going to have to keep changing, keep looking for new ways to reach these students, and new teaching ways to reach them, because the price is too high to pay to not reach these kids. And so I think that's a very, very important thing. And then finally, I think we need to reach out to all the community. I mean, there is no doubt that the foundation of any growing community is at schools. If we do not have good schools, we are not going to have a growing community. We have got to have schools to attract new families wanting to move in. If we're going to attract new businesses, they're going to look at where their kids are going to go, they're going to look at the quality of education and know about the quality of the labor pool that they're going to be able to draw from, they're going to look to see what kind of people they can draw into this community, looking at the schools. We have got to do that, because they're so important to our community. I would like to see the schools, and by the schools, I mean all the schools. It's important to have quality public quality public and private education. I would like to see us working with the chamber and working with recruiters such as physician recruiters or real estate people, talking, who are working with people moving in and talking about what their people are looking for and coming up with a plan where we can come up with some materials, we can come up with videos that show how we promote our school district for the best for our community.
Thank you. Michael?
First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. It's, this has been an eye-opener for me for the last two and a half months. I've met many people. I've met, I've explored new addresses that I've never, streets I never knew about here in Jeff City. I've been here for 37 years, putting out signs and meeting folks. It's been, it's been a real pleasure. One of the areas that I'm really proud of is that the Jefferson City, Missouri National Educational Association has endorsed me. And I, I really feel proud that they feel that I can go forth and support teachers within this district. Why have I decided to run for school board? Because I truly believe that we've got to have folks that will stand up and represent the community. We will not back down. We will be a voice. Like I've always said, I am your voice in the community. We need to make sure that we have clear mission and vision that we're following through, that from the superintendent to the assistant superintendents for elementary, for secondary, to our building administrators, to our teachers, they need to have a clear vision of what is expected as we go in and implementing whatever programs that we're implementing. I truly believe that we must move our school system from one of promises to one of performance. We've promised a lot, but we're not produced. We need to start doing that. And I truly believe that I've been in positions over the years, that I've worked with, I've been a member of, of teams, been able to garner the support of other board members to move things forth. I remember when I first came into my current position as a director of juvenile court, there was a program that had been implemented almost 10 years before I got there. And it was the suspended, the suspended student classroom located down at the Miller Performing Arts Center. We had a 30% success attendance with that program. It's for kids that are suspended from school. They would have a safe environment to go to and have their homework brought down to them. But we had 30% of the folks attending. I asked my, I was asking, why is this? No one had an answer. You started looking and ants and going to the families and looking at the issues, going to the schools because it, actually, our problem was that their two middle schools found out they had no transportation. They couldn't get there. So, the thing was, let's put the transportation so we can have our kids go. We've got a 92% attendance right now. I truly believe you need to be able to identify what the issues are, make sure that you have the resources in place, and follow through, and hold our superintendent accountable in reporting back a continuous quality assurance process that we need to make sure that we're maintaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
In conclusion, I would like to talk about returning to the basics. In education, it's the basics, teaching kids at an early age to read, write, and, and math so that they, and to create a, a culture where they want to continue to learn their whole lives. And as a school board, I think we also need to return to the basics. And I see those basics as retaining our teachers, rebuilding the trust, and managing our finances wisely. At the moment, we are in crisis regarding space. We are overcrowded. That is exacerbate, excuse me, exacerbating all our problems across the district. But we can't address that until trust is restored. So, the school board has got to be more accountable. We've got to have more oversight. We've got to use our can-do spirit to create a culture of openness, receptiveness, and respect. And we've talked about running the school, up here, about running the school board meetings differently to engage, have more discussion. And I've been very distressed by what I heard, that there is discussion, but it's not taking place in public. Well, the people of Missouri decided many years ago that public business was going to be conducted in public. And there are very few exceptions to what has to be conducted in public. But that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that there are many discussions beforehand and that's what's leading to the seven-to-zero votes. And that has got to stop. We will not have openness until that discussion takes place in public. We also need to return to our sound business processes, practices, which is part of that openness. We need to bid more things. We need to be more open about our decisions and not hide them on a consent agenda. For example, a couple of years ago, deciding to invest $1.1 million in renovating the administrative offices instead of putting that $1.1 million into classrooms and teachers. We have tremendous positives in this district. We have teachers that are so dedicated and so hardworking. We have a community that is giving and engaged. We have practices that can be brought over to the school. And one of the examples is the Chamber of Commerce. They put into your newspaper several times a year a chamber update. I'd like to see a similar update for education. And I'd like to ask our business community to help sponsor that. I'd like to see a real communication where we talk about our successes with our students, not just our sports successes like on the Hy-Vee page, but our academic successes, about the innovations, and make that a real communication tool. And I hope that that takes place regardless of the outcome of the election. And that I would hope that whoever the two who are going to be elected are will pledge to, to take that cause up. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and sending your time to get to know the candidates. And I want to recognize and commend my fellow candidates for their willingness to serve on the school board. It does take a tremendous amount of time and dedication. And I commend them just on the campaign trail. It's, it's been very interesting to get to know their perspectives, hear some of their thoughts and ideas. I love the opportunity that we have to share. And my sincere and genuine desire to communicate with the students, the parents, the teachers, and every member of our community, the taxpayers, what is needed for our district and to implement those policies and implement those ideas and the thoughts at the board level. This opportunity that the, the candidate forums provides enables me to learn more about what's going on in the minds and hearts of our, the fellow members of our community. I do want to point out one comment that was made regarding the $1.1 million renovation of the board office. I didn't get a new chair and we didn't put marble around everything. That $1.1 million renovation was done because the boiler needed to be replaced, the foundation was cracking, there were snakes crawling on the floor of that building. It, the building was in tremendous disrepair. There are people that are employed and work every day in that building. And what we did, we added a data center so that we could make informed decisions, decisions that are based on data. And we added a welcome center so that all of the members who, people who come to register their students go to the board office and they all get welcomed at the same place. So, if you have a child in middle, middle school, elementary school, and high school, you go to the board office. You don't have to go to three separate buildings. The paperwork is streamlined, the process is streamlined. It was a very needed addition to our district. And it was something that the district, that the board voted on, voted to do because it, the economies of scale that it provided were added value to the district and added value to our families. It allowed them the opportunity to engage in the board office as well. I do think that we need to make sure that we spend our dollars wisely. I feel like our district, in light of the past six years that I've been on the board, we are in excellent fiscal condition. And I feel like every single board member has been very, very responsible to the fiscal, accountable for the fiscal responsibility of our district. I have a sincere, genuine desire and this, and a passion for education. And it comes from a place of love and caring and compelling need and desire to help all of the children of our community. And I've always had that. Everything that I do has been to help the children of our community, Council for Drug-Free Youth and everything. I only want to ensure that all of our children have an appropriate, excellent education that I know that we're capable of providing in Jefferson City. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. On behalf of the News Tribune and the chamber, I'd like to thank the candidates for participating in this forum, as well as attending the forum, those who are attending the forum tonight. I'd like to thank them, the volunteers who have helped put this on, the video team who helped make it possible to stream this outside of these chambers, and the city for hosting the event here, providing these council chambers. Lastly, I would encourage all residents who have observed this forum to get out and vote on April 7th, to, to exercise your right to choose the next board members. Thank you for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.